Okay, Commissioner, this is the next item. It's an application for certificate of appropriateness to the Borough of Manhattan at 1271 Avenue of the Americas, AKA 1261-1277 Sixth Avenue, 101, 130 West 50th Street, 100-130 West 51st Street, Time &amp; Life Building and interior landmark, daca number 165624, block 1003, lot 29, near an international-style commercial skyscraper, ground-floor lobby designed by Harrison Abramowitz and Harris and built in 1956 through 60. Application is to restore a passageway, remove walls, relocate an entry, replace doors, elevator turnstiles, terrazzo flooring, and glass ceiling panels, and install reception desks, lighting sprinklers, and security cameras. This was read into the record on January 20, 2015, is being presented today for the first time.
Hi, Catherine Rand, Preservation Department staff at the Commission. The proposal consists of changes to the designated interior space at this lobby of Time &amp; Life Building, and we have Chris Brill Edwards from the Rockefeller Group and Cass Dackelberg of the Higgins Quays Park Partners here to describe the proposal.
Okay, we'll reopen the hearing.
My name is Chris Brill Edwards of the Rockefeller Group. As you know, we're going to present today a proposed plan for the lobby renovation of 1271 Avenue of the Americas, but before I'd like to take a couple of moments just to talk to you about a broader renovation plan that we have for buildings to put them into context. So as many of you know, 1271 Avenue of the Americas was the first westward expansion of Rockefeller Center, which was built by the Rockefeller Group in the late, excuse me, late 50s. The building was designed and built for the Time &amp; Life Company as a sole tenant. We still occupy the building today. Over the years, Time &amp; Life has undergone many changes, which has led to their decision to vacate the building in its entirety by the end of 2017 in the least term. Unlike the Time &amp; Life companies, the Rockefeller Group hasn't actually changed that much over the time, and we have managed and owned the building since it was built, and we intend to manage and own the building in perpetuity as it is one of our core assets. That being said, after 60 years of use, the building is somewhat tired and needs a significant set of upgrades. Those upgrades, outside of what we're talking about today, include an elevator modernization, improvements to mechanical and electrical systems, energy efficiency measures, including the replacement of portions of the exterior wall, and then obviously the ground plan that we'll be talking a little bit more about today, both inside and outside, to provide some more amenities both for the tenants and for the public. Now, in terms of the presentation you'll see in a few moments here, we have a couple of primary objectives I'd like to share with you. The first one is life safety. When the building was built, sprinklers were not required in the building. Obviously, that's something that we believe we want to install specifically in the lobby. You'll see how that drives some more scope, try to get those sprinklers installed. Same thing goes for security systems. Security measures were not what they were, were not what they are today, and obviously we want to do what we can to secure the building. The third objective is really an operational issue. As I've said many times now, the building was built as a single-tenant building. Unless someone can march a 2 million square foot tent to my door, it'll most likely be a one-tenant building going forward, so that'll drive things like traffic flow, guest registration and such. Okay? I'll turn it over soon to Cass and Jay to go through the technical presentation here. We think we've put together a really robust proposal, specifically on the lobby, something that will, or that is sympathetic to the original design and also will enable the building to be the icon that it is in New York architecture. I'd also like to share with you that we got support from many voices within the community, namely, Community Board Five, we had unanimous approval, assembly meeting in Godfrey's office, from Danny Rodnick's office, the Municipal Art Society, as well as many others who you'll hear from later on today. So with that, I'd like to turn it over and start going through the technical presentation.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Chris. Cass Dackelberg, Higgins Quays Park Partners, good afternoon, Commissioners. This is a site plan. Time &amp; Life Building is shown here in red. It is bound by Avenue of the Americas on the east, 51st Street to the north, and 50th Street to the south. It represents the first westward expansion of Rockefeller Center. This is the core of the historic Rockefeller Center complex, and when Time Inc. outgrew its space at One Rockefeller Plaza here in the center, the Rockefellers and Time partnered together to develop the Time &amp; Life Building, which was the first, as I said, expansion across Avenue of the Americas, and really was considered to be part of Rockefeller Center. The development continued to the south with what's architecturally historically known as the X, Y, Z Buildings, the Exxon Building, McGraw-Hill, and the Cellonese Chemical Company Building. But Time &amp; Life was significant in particular because it was his first step across the avenue. An exterior view just to locate the tower directly across the street from Radio City and its obvious connection to the center, and then a photograph on the right of the designated interior. The extent of the designation, which I'll show you in plan, obviously is the lobby and then a small piece of a breezeway that extends to the exterior. As the designation report describes the lobby, it is eclectic in character, but it also goes on to speak how it is a sort of contrast, a study in contrasts, excuse me. And I think when you look at this photograph, you can see sort of this balance between the sort of handmade artistic quality of the artwork that's integrated into the lobby, which is another connection that this building and this lobby in particular has to Rockefeller Center and to that complex. The contrast of artwork, this Fritz Glarner painting, in contrast to what the designation report calls advanced industrial materials. So speaking about the glass tile ceiling, these stainless steel panels that wrap the elevator core, the serpentine terrazzo across the floor, there's this interesting contrast between the handmade and the machine-made in this lobby. There's artwork integrated on the east end of the core here, a Glarner, and then a Joseph Oliver's piece on the west end, which I'll show you. As part of this project, there's an art conservation scope work that the team is undertaking. I'm not going to spend any time talking about it, but it is certainly part of art thinking and part of the project in general. An existing conditions floor plan, the shaded area represents the designated area. The interior lobby was designated in 2002. It includes the central core, obviously around the elevator cores, and then the circulating corridors around that. There's also this arcade or breezeway, which it's covered, but it's exterior space and it extends from 50th Street North revolving doors up to 51st Street. Historically, this actually extended also out to Avenue of the Americas, and actually as part of this project, we're proposing to restore that connection back to Avenue of the Americas. But a couple of things to point out in the way the lobby works today. As Chris said, there isn't, and there hasn't been historically, a sort of a focal point for this lobby. It was really about moving lots of people around to get to those 2 million square feet upstairs. There's primary entries from 50th Street on the west, the west corridor, and the east corridor. The east corridor is probably used a bit more because it connects directly to the north, and then this north corridor here with the escalators that go up to the second floor and then down to the concourse, which is a really essential piece of the circulation of this building and tying it to the sort of underground aquifer of the concourse and connecting to all of the whole Rockefeller Center complex. On the south side of the lobby, this area was historically shox in here. This is a sort of a secondary corridor. It's called the south corridor, as we refer to it, and it's really, it's a narrower corridor. In fact, actually, in the designation report, it's not even described. The other, the west, the north, and the east corridors are described as are the materials of the lobby, but the south corridor space is not. But currently, today, there's an egress stair in this volume and a messenger center for the building, and then this space is a AT&amp;T wireless store. The other spaces are occupied by larger commercial tenants. And this space was basically created, the lobby was extended in 2002 during the designation process, and so this area has seen really the greatest amount of change in this lobby. The next slide, perhaps easier seen in your book, is a historic plan from 1958. This is not an as-built plan, but it sort of indicates the intent of the architects, Harrison Abramowitz and Harris. So this was drawn about a year before the building's completion. And you can see again, this central core, this very generous north corridor with the escalators, the breezeway to the north extending up to 51st Street and out to Avenue of the Americas, and you also see this, the idea, the intention of connecting this corridor as well up through 51st Street. When the building was finished, all of this space was leased to one restaurant tenant, so this piece wasn't constructed, but you get a sense of sort of the way the lobby was planned. These were, the west, the north, and the east were very much the primary circulation routes, and then the south corridor was sort of secondary, and then this was a band of small, it's called out on the plan as shox. The other thing to point out is the way the revolving doors were shown in this plan as symmetrically positioned. That's not how they were built. Jay will take you through the design presentation, talk to you about how our intention is to get back to the symmetricality. This is an existing plan, just highlighting the interventions that have occurred over time in the lobby, particularly since 2001. Much of the change that has happened in this lobby is post 9/11, and as Chris said, while there are upgrades to security that are planned as part of this project, what that actually means is removing and rationalizing turnstiles, eliminating railings, and improving circulation. So what's shown in red here in particular are railings, turnstiles, and what they do is they break up the flow of the lobby. Historically, it was an open space. One could circulate around through many areas of the lobby, and that now is no longer the case. When you come in from the south, you can't get into this zone. Similarly, when you come in from this entry, you can't get this way. There are barriers here, and the proposal is to sort of rationalize that and eliminate those barriers to allow for better access. As well, as I mentioned before, this portion of the lobby has changed significantly, and that's something we'll be talking more about in the design presentation. Some historical photographs, again, sort of illustrating this sort of balance of materials, these sort of hard planar features, the white marble on the perimeter walls, the glass ceiling, the sort of taut glass tile ceiling, and the stainless steel that wraps the core, and then this serpentine terrazzo floor that really animates the lobby. The artwork Fritz Glarner's painting in the east corridor, seen on the left, and Joseph Oliver's piece on the right in the west corridor, as I said, those are obviously being preserved and conserved as part of the project. And then a color photograph, this photograph has been very helpful for us in sort of thinking about our approach and our effort to sort of open the lobby up again. This is a view in the north corridor looking east, perhaps in the reproduction in your handout. Again, you see this very planar sort of taut quality and uniform quality of this glass tile ceiling, which is not so much the case as it is today, but as it was originally intended. And then this balance between this sort of animated floor plane and this sort of industrial character, this manufactured character of the walls and ceilings. A few views of the exterior, and this is something that we've been looking at closely in terms of thinking about that serpentine pattern, which very much was intended to bring these sort of outside in. So this graphic from a circular in the New York Times from 1958, and then a photograph after the completion of the building, you see that same serpentine terrazzo pattern that went across the plaza and then into the lobby. That pattern has references back to Brazil. Harrison and Oscar Newmeyer worked very closely together, very involved in the nominations. There's some interesting connections between Time Inc. and their efforts to sort of reach into South American markets, and so that has its origins there. But for us, it is really an iconic element of this building. And this diagram from 1958 also speaks to the way this floor plane, both on the outside and the inside, was thought of as a really sort of dematerializing the perimeter of the tower and working together. Some photographs from just prior to the time of designation, some black and white photographs, just something to point out actually, particularly in this photograph, you can see it maybe in your handout, it's clear, but some of the ceiling tiles, these two-by-two glass tiles by 2001, some of those have already been replaced and not replaced with similar material, but material that stands out. You can see some of these have been replaced. This is a view looking south down this south corridor prior to the creation of this larger south lobby. Some existing photographs today, as I said, the integrity of the space is there and the materials largely are there, although there have been introduction of turnstiles and railings, which really break up the flow, x-ray machines, all of those elements will be removed as part of this project. This is the south lobby space, which now really connects the perimeter of the building to the core, and it brings daylight into this very large space. It's about more than half of that volume to the south. These views, you can see there's a reception desk and railings that end up actually chopping that space up. Some other views along the west and north sides, again, fairly austere treatment in the lobby. The revolving doors on 50th Street, these doors, just to point out, these actually were replaced just during the time of designation. Those are not historic. They are in their original location, but the material is not historic. And then this railing here, which is right here in plan, which prohibits you from actually continuing down that south corridor. On the exterior, a few views of the breezeway, so this is now looking from 51st Street down toward the lobby. This wall was historically glazed and has been concealed basically, and that's going to be opened up. And then this element right here represents the infill here to that historic opening to Avenue of the Americas, and that will be exposed through this project as well. The two iconic canopies on 50th Street, you can see they're treated differently. This revolving door, which is set outboard engages these columns, while this one to the west is actually recessed, which is sort of counter to the vision that the architects had of a symmetrical treatment. And before I turn it over to Jay, I think one of the things to point out is, when we were thinking about this project, thinking about Time &amp; Life, particularly the lobby design and the placement of 20th century lobby design for office towers, we were sort of curious to see where this building fit. And it turns out that the building very much is sort of a hybrid between these sort of earlier 20th century models to the sort of more modern, or more modern transparent towers. And the changes that we're proposing, I think, doesn't affect that position that this building holds, and I think that's an important thing to note. This is obviously Time &amp; Life, sort of looking backward, and this is sort of more of a typical model. This is 30 Rockefeller Plaza, which has obvious associations with 1271, but you have this very askew treatment with this sort of central circulation areas with perimeter storefronts and a very prominent desk right at the front side of the Rockefeller Plaza entry, which is the primary entry to 30 Rock. Seagram Building, sort of on the other side, contemporary with Time &amp; Life, but a very different idea, an idea of transparency and of having very clear rational entry and reception for people coming in off of Park Avenue. Etch Aime Manhattan Plaza too, again, the base of the building is entirely glazed in a way even beyond the way Seagram is treated. And so this sort of is the opposite end of the spectrum, whereas Rockefeller Center, 30 Rock is this sort of closed version, 1271 sits somewhere in between, and I think will continue to hold that position. And then 1251, which is this building directly to the south of Time &amp; Life, and it's sort of an extension and an evolution of the Rockefeller Center complex. And with that, I'll have Jay pick up and take you through the design.
Okay, firming from company. I'll try to pick up quickly. So, you know, as we start to work on our proposal for the lobby design, we really have two major aspects that we're thinking about. One is the major program shifts of the building from a single-tenant building with four-way finding to as future as a multi-tenant building, which really needs to handle the traffic in a particular way. And the other side is, of course, the respect and love in a way for the language, the architecture, and the feeling of the lobby as its historic position. So as Cass was saying, in terms of planning and logic about how a building of this age sits on the street and sits in the city, the historic iconic serpentine pattern of paving gives us some ideas and clues about how a building can be organized, and a program of restoration of certain surfaces and replacement kind of others, and replicating details that have been lost in the project, sort of all combined to form our proposal going forward. So this is a, returning you to a plan of the lobby in its existing condition with the incursions of lobby security, the closing of the breezeway, the asymmetrical entries, and the changes that have already happened in the south lobby. Going forward to our proposed plan, you'll see four major proposals. One is the restoration of the breezeway to Sex Asylum, in connection to the existing breezeway. Second is the removal of all of the turnstiles, barricades, and other things, planters that have occurred inside the lobby, and really ironically, you know, our response to a more secure building is actually a lot less stuff, no bag checks and no things like that, really. The turnstiles, the turnstiles are placed in the throes of the elevator lobbies outside of the circulation line for long. The symmetrical organization of the revolver entries, again, the building across the street serves 1251, a later product by Harrison Abramowitz, resolved these in a very similar way and are sort of paired. And then, of course, the opening of the south lobby, the removal of the remaining two pieces of the former stores in the south lobby, and the placement of two lobby desks. I'll take you now through a series of existing photographs and proposed renderings. This in the east lobby, you can see planters, a temporary desk for check-in because there's no place to check in, no place to find your way in the building. And I'll talk about some material issues later, but the proposed condition really removes all these things and you see the Glarner, the restored stainless steel and stone walls, and we'll talk about replacement and kind of terrazzo floor and glass ceiling. This is a photograph from the current condition in what we call the south lounge of the south lobby, the open part of the lobby. Looking north through the elevator core, you can see barricades and incursions, and the proposed condition moves all that away, places two sympathetic lobby desks and the replacement or remove of the turnstile bits of the throes of the elevator lot themselves. We move back in a short.
Yeah, I was just going to say, as you're going and speaking about the respect and the language, could you also speak about public access and how each of the changes you're making might actually enhance the public access to the landmark?
That's a good point. So implicit, I guess, an idea that the security line is back here at the throes of the elevator, these are for all intents and purposes, public entries, and people can walk through into that entry.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a free and open lobby.
I was just saying, as you show the pictures, say, this portion is now, is what is and will be and so.
So all the places you couldn't get to, except the literal elevator lobbies themselves, are free to be wandered and enjoyed. As we go back to the, we're moving back into the main space of the proposed south lobby. You can see the proposed lobby desks in sort of more oblique view, as well as the turnstiles in the elevator lobby. So really, the kind of only new architectural invention, intervention in the space, in some sense, is the, are the desks, the material of the sort of rectangular bases, the directional stainless steel, it's massive directional stainless steel, the white marble piece here, it doesn't exactly match, but is in the same family of the white marble that rounds the exterior lobby, and there's some small ideas about how corners are turned, which we've taken from the kind of evident language of how the central core walls are developed, so it's a kind of soft link. So it's an intervention, which is but we hope very much in keeping with the architectural language and intent of the building as it exists. Some plan and elevation drawings of the new lobby desks, just showing a little bit more about their relationships to the existing core walls, portionally and dimensionally, as well as information we've provided about the turnstiles themselves. A photograph of the existing condition from looking into the building lobby, the south lobby from 50th Street, one can see that there's transparency, there's availability of view inside and for this to be enjoyed inside and outside, and again, sort of this idea that the serpentine terrazzo is something that I think the architects intended in slightly more limited way, that we're able to bring inside and outside and bring from curb to core. The proposal in which we further open up the south lobby really celebrates that, celebrates the iconic identity of the paving, of the canopies, and making available view and enjoyment of the landmark lobby inside. Some of the small changes that we're proposing to the revolvers, again, Cass, as Cass said, these are not historic material, but we're not making a major change, but there is a problem relative to egress and ADA access to the main lobby in which the leaf door here, that was originally the only way to get inside the side of the lobby without going through revolvers, that doesn't work dimensionally either for egress capacity or for ADA dimensions. And so what we are proposing is to use the side light for that door and to disconnect that with a light of flax between the revolvers and the bonded building. The remaining part of the presentation really deals with the material aspects of the project primarily, namely, the terrazzo floors, the glass panel ceiling, and light fixtures. So this slide shows the existing condition of the terrazzo floor, certain cracks, certain places where there's been replacements that don't match, and then other places where there's sort of small things that have been removed, small and medium-sized things that have been removed, where there are less sensitive patches. And then, of course, as we remove all of the barriers that have been put into the lobby over the last 15 years, there will be many more conditions like this. In dark blue are all the kind of nonoriginal elements or cracks that would need to be addressed as part of a restoration, renovation of the lobby. The light blue here shows if we use the dividers, existing dividers, which is sort of extent of terrazzo replacement, and it is extensive, and our team has sort of come to the conclusion that relates to the project properly so that the building is returned to its original luster that already presses in making a complete replacement in kind of the terrazzo floor. We have determined that the original details, these proposed details, even as we replace the terrazzo floor, that we can retain almost all of the cast coat, which is in good shape. And I think it's also important, and the architects will remember to understand, that the detail here is showing a full original style, cementitious terrazzo replacement, so that it really will look like it was intended to look, and these are some photographs we have some samples with us here today. We've been working with Dominic Mack and his team quite extensively to find the right size aggregate, color aggregate, and mix that will replace these, the grayish terrazzo and the white terrazzo serpentine swirls in such a way that they really look like they once did beginning. The ceiling is a complicated subject that we've spent quite a bit of time trying to work out. As Cass had mentioned to you, of course, there are these numbers of panels that have been either broken or replaced over the years, and many of the replacements are very easily seen because they don't match the original. The other essential issue, of course, is that we're going to put sprinkler system in the lobby, and it is And it is the case actually that while the ceiling looks like it's a removable ceiling, it's actually built as glass panels that are glued to a plaster and lap background. So the idea that we can remove the ceiling to put something in isn't really possible. So that has led us to a proposal where, again, this is a series of photos showing our logic. These are the replaced panels that don't match already. The new sprinkler layout with light blue about if you were just to put a sprinkler in, could you get two towels? And of course, the piping to get to those, almost the whole ceiling is affected and it makes sense in our minds to replace the whole ceiling. Back to plain, original, existing reflected ceiling plan. Next sheet is a reflected ceiling plan which shows the south lobby scope and quite small here, you can see sprinklers added. I'm gonna go to a detail there of existing. You see the light fixtures, the rosettes and the ceiling tiles. And look carefully, as I change this, the addition of sprinklers at a, as sort of minimal a grade as we can do. You also will have noticed, as we've done that, that the flange around the light fixtures has been made smaller. And this is because our research into the existing drawings showed a different flange and our suspicion that the light fixtures that are in the lobby now are actually replacement fixtures, not in keeping with what was their original, are true. The original housing was a blackout fixture with a kind of very low profile edge in which you get this kind of halo of light, but you don't get this blast of all these sort of reflective dots. That's the existing condition and this is our proposed condition. The flange and edge is quite close to this. The lamping is rather different and uses modern LED technology, but the effect, we believe, is much closer to what was originally there. We are proposing in some cove areas to add some modest amount of light to highlight in different ways the stainless steel walls on one way and the white stone walls on the other. This is the detail for the stainless steel walls and this is the proposed detail for the stone wall, white stone walls. Again, I'll go through these quickly. The original detail of the ceiling, which actually does show that the rosettes are just attaching it to a semitist plaster background. And a proposed detail for the future where sightlines, dimensions and colors and actually even to the degree possible, the reuse of the existing rosettes is incorporated. But the panels are indestructible so that over time as they need to replace, we can add replacement panels. Again, a similar exercise for the lights in the breezeway. The original design, the replacement fixtures, we're not sure when, but it's got a light o' leer label in front of it and then a proposal in the breezeway to replace with fixtures that are born to keep making a focus. Thank you for your time. And it's a lot.
I just want to ask.
Thank you, yes, questions?
So it does, you say it's, the glass ceiling is actually at the existing height?
Our new glass ceiling is at the exact plane as it is now.
Okay, thank you.
And the samples that my colleagues have brought over, we, that is an original panel, yes, panel in Cas's hand, where like almost, they're not quite on the match of color, although the match of texture has been quite successful so far.
Yes, so the idea is to have a roll finish, similar to what's there historically, but with something that's laminated, safe condition that as Jay said, is demountable so we can go up and treat the sprinkler systems lighting much more easily than anyway. So this is the existing, if you want to look at them and finish, finish with the sprinkler heads. And as Jay said, the effort will be to use these little washers, which you see in the corners, because we have additional area of the glass, there will be the need to review, but they will match, they'll match the story. And then the terrazzo samples, I think the photographs in the presentation are clearer even than these, we've been very successful in matching the existing terrazzo.
All right, other questions?
So when you look up, you'll, so there's more ceiling tile now than before, the glass?
Because we're extending the lobby to the south, there'll be a bit more of this glass, but it will look identical. The light fixtures will be much closer to what was there historically and then we'll have just the introduction of the sprinklers.
And so what is that light fixture that you're using in place of a light o' leer?
So there, this is in the breezeway. So there's a, if you can see, this is what's proposed here. It's a much lower profile, closer to the.
This is the original, this was really just somebody sort of took out, cut out the old fixtures, replaced it with something off the shelf. This is a, I'll say a customized lens on a, not quite off the shelf.
So it's a historic, existing and proposed. So the two ends are meant to sort of be closer to one another. You have this sort of gumdrop-like fixture that's there today and the historic is much flatter. And then similarly, you want to go back one slide, in the lobby to the, so again, historic, existing and proposed. And again, the trim, which is much fatter around the opening in the main lobby and the glass ceiling, will be reduced down to one inch, which was there and shows up in that historic. We'll get much closer to this as well.
Why isn't that proposed to look more like the original?
What, what doesn't look like the original is what's above. The lamping is different and we believe that the effect of this lamping will be, one is much more energy, energy conscious, but I think the effect of light will be quite, quite good and quite close. I think it's page ten or twelve, there's one of the color interior photograph that Katsha, when you look at the ceiling, you see this sort of small halo of light, which is, which is glancing on this low profile edge, whereas if today you walk in there, you see these big reflectors, your ten or twelve, the page before that, page ten has the, that one on the left.
The color historic photograph is, yep. So we think we're actually able to get back to the historic light quality, actually much more so than what's there today, which has to reflect their housing, which makes them very bright, which does not sort of what shows up in the.
Notes on this is that this is actually a sort of blackout housing. And what's in there now is this is all completely reflective.
So it's designed to look like.
It's designed to look like. There you go, sort of plants instead of lots of big blocks of light.
Okay, any other questions? All right, why don't we take testimony, Alex Herrera?
Hello, I'm Alex Herrera for the New York Landmarks Conservancy. And the Conservancy's Public Policy Committee has reviewed the application for alterations to the lobby of the Time and Life Building. And we support the proposal and believe that it will return the interior landmark closer to its original appearance. The lobby is a composition of components that contrast with and complement each other to dazzling effect. Over the years, however, a series of minor interventions, such as the installation of security apparatus, replacement of selected ceiling tiles and patches to the terrazzo flooring, have somewhat tarnished the shine. The restoration and replacement of selected elements will improve the whole. The current insulation of turnstiles and railings clutter the space while the proposed security and entrance system will more, be more streamlined and appropriate. The applicant's promise, promises in kind replacement materials, which installed at 100% will deliver uniform surfaces, preferable to floors and ceiling marred by a patchwork of different colors and textures. As these steps entail removing original fabric, we suggest the owner might leave a small section in place with an explanation of the lobby's history and how it has been altered. The applicant's proposal to eliminate two stores in the south corridor, open up a connection to Sixth Avenue and replace an inward facing revolving door with one that faces out, will alter the plan but not damage it. Instead, they will improve circulation and allow greater visibility from the plaza along 50th Street. This will allow an extension of the serpentine terrazzo flooring through the south corridor to the exterior, further connecting the plaza to the lobby. Restoration of the site-specific glamour and Albers artwork will be a fitting finishing touch. Overall, this proposal maintains the intent of the lobby design and will recover its radiance, hopefully. Thank you for the opportunity to present the Conservancy's views.
Thank you. Viara McPherson?
Good afternoon, my name is Bianca McPherson. I am here to present testimony on behalf of Assembly Member Richard N. Goffred. My name is Richard N. Goffred. I represent the 75th Assembly District in Manhattan, which includes the neighborhoods of Chelsea, Hell's Kitchen, Midtown and parts of the Upper West Side and Murray Hill, Kipps Bay. I thank the Commission for calendaring this application and for the, for this opportunity to submit testimony. I support the renovation of the lobby located at 1271 Avenue of the Americas, known as the Time and Life Building, for its enhancements of the interior. The lobby was constructed in the 1950s for the Time and Life Building and designed by architect Michael M. Harris and Harrison and Abramowitz and Harris, sorry. The lobby interior was designated a landmark in 2002 for its striking interior, which is an outstanding example of mid-century modernism and the international style. Features such as the stainless steel panels provided the building with a sense of industrial glamour and the gray and white serpentine patterned terrazzo floor with stainless steel edging express a sense of fashion. The Rockefeller Group is proposing to make a change to the lobby to accommodate the building, the building becoming, becoming a multi-tenant building instead of its current arrangement as a one-tenant building and to remove some features that were installed prior to the 2002 designation. These changes include restoring a passageway, removing some walls and relocating an entry. More importantly, the Rockefeller Group proposes to enhance interior features to preserve its mid-century modern appearance and repair deterioration. Some enhancements include replacing ceiling tiles and the damaged terrazzo floor and the installation of lighting, sprinklers and security cameras. The plan preserves the lobby's historic design and art, which includes murals by Joseph Albers and others. I think it is a good plan and I applaud the Rockefeller Group for the good judgment and care. I support the plan and trust that with the assistance of the LPC, it will maintain the planning principles of Rockefeller Center as well as ensure that any changes to the interior will be in keeping with its historic character. Thank you again for the opportunity to present testimony today.
Thank you. Barbara Say?
Barbara Say of the Historic District Council. HDC applauds this sensitive restoration project, which includes the replacement of in-kind terrazzo floors and glass ceiling panels. We thank the applicant for their thoughtful approach to this very distinguished and deserving modern interior. Thank you.
Thank you. Allison Wasserman.
Hi, Allison Wasserman, Real Estate Board of New York. The Real Estate Board of New York, or REBNE, is a broadly based trade association of over 16,000 owners, developers, brokers, managers and real estate professionals active through New York City. We support the proposed plan by the Rockefeller Group Development Corporation to revitalize the ground floor lobby of their property at 1271 Avenue of the Americas and believe that their application for a certificate of appropriateness merits approval from the Commission. The Rockefeller Group has been a tremendous steward of the Time and Life Building. Working with respected preservation consultants, Higgin and Quaspart, they have done extensive research into the history of the building's lobby and based on that review have proposed a plan for the lobby that is historically sensitive. The $40 million rehabilitation of the lobby includes the restoration of the stainless steel and marble wall panels, the in-kind replacement of the damaged terrazzo floor, the removal of nonoriginal elements, the installation of critical life safety upgrades and measures to improve public access. The Rockefeller Group plans to increase public access by restoring the original open breezeway that was historically a link between the lobby and the Avenue of Americas and removing nonoriginal railings, turnstiles, x-ray machines and other obstructions that were installed to address the heightened security concerns since 2001. These necessary security features will be installed in more discreet locations adjacent to the elevators. In order to install a necessary sprinkler system in the lobby and add to the building's safety, the existing glass ceiling tiles will be replaced in kind with new custom glass panels fabricated specifically for this project by the same manufacturer of the original tile. Additionally, plans call for removing portions of the south corridor wall that was significantly altered prior to landmark's designation in 2002 to allow for better day lighting and transparency. Portions of the marble clad wall will be salvaged and used to replace non-matching marble in other areas of the designated lobby. The proposed changes to the landmark lobby respect the architectural history of the lobby and will be an enhancement to its original beauty. REBNE supports the thoughtful and sensitive revitalization of this beautiful and distinguished interior, which would be a public benefit for future generations of New Yorkers. We urge the Commission to approve the application for a certificate of appropriateness for the aforementioned proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Jen Hensley?
Good, good afternoon, I'm Jen Hensley, representing the Association for a Better New York. ABNE is a 43-year-old civic organization that advocates to make the city a better place to live, work and visit. On behalf of ABNE, I am here in support of the application for 1271 Avenue of the Americas. This proposed $40 million rehabilitation of the building's lobby will increase public access and restore the original open breezeway, reviving the original design for the space. We believe that the proposal before you represents a significant and successful effort to sensitively rehabilitate and restore the historical design of the lobby area while also providing important and mandated improvements to the life safety function and energy efficiency of the building. Additionally, the lobby design ensures that the building can effectively service multiple tenants, which is core to the firm's overall repositioning of the building once time leaves. The plan, the plans call for the lobby to be streamlined and clutter that has developed over the years will be removed to showcase the historical elements of the design. We are happy to see that the plans call for the conservation of the two most prominent artworks as well. And this effort to rehabilitate the lobby is an important part of the overall repositioning and upgrade of the building. ABNE has long supported the rezoning of parts of Midtown and while this project falls outside of the scope of the rezoning proposals, the efforts of the Rockefeller Group to modernize and enhance their building in the heart of one of the city's most iconic business districts must be applauded. The investment is important for the city, both in terms of the jobs and tax revenue it will generate and also in the upgrading of such an important asset in a key commercial corridor. ABNE strongly supports the Rockefeller Group's proposal and we hope that the Landmarks Commission will also embrace this thoughtful and effective plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more speakers? The Community Board Fire recommends approval of this proposal. And we also received a letter from Councilmember Garadnik, who also supports the proposal, as well as a letter from the Municipal Art Society in support of the project. Do we have any other questions for the applicant? Okay, we could.
Just a question about the panels, the stainless steel panels are intentionally a different color or are they supposed to be the same?
They're the, meaning from the renderings to the photo?
Uh huh. You mean are they?
They are the same.
Same as the?
They're the same, we're not, we're not replacing. They're just directional, it's the same material, it's just directional. So it reads there, I mean, when you look at it?
Looks like that, right? Okay. Are there any other questions? All right, we can close the hearing. I think the scope of work and the planned changes are very welcome and I think it only reinforces what a great lobby this is. And I think that would be a very positive thing for the area as well as for the designation and preservation of the building. Yes.
Certainly agree. It's sort of an irony that the lobby here, I think, is a much finer piece of art than the building itself. And worth every penny of that extraordinary amount we just heard that might be spent on, on restoring it. Now, I think it's a, it's a, it's a great thing and I'll just comment on, I don't know that I've ever heard of such a unanimous and varied group of, of supporters of, of any one proposal. So congratulations.
All right, any other comments? Okay, then, ready? Okay, we could go to decision. Michael, would you read that, please? The record.
A matter of 1271 Avenue of the Americas, also known as 1261, 1277 Sixth Avenue, 133 West 50th Street, 10130 West 51st Street, the Time Life Building, an interior landmark. An application to restore a passageway, remove walls, relocate an entry, replace doors, elevator turnstiles, terrazzo flooring, glass ceiling panels, install reception desks, lighting sprinklers and security cameras. I recommend approval, finding that the programmatic change in the building's occupancy and use from that of the original predominantly single tenancy to an increasingly multiple tenancy office tower necessitates the creation of greater circulation space in the lobby. That the proposed expansion of the previously enlarged south corridor by removing the remaining marble walls and flanking the West 50th Street. marble walls and flanking the West 50th Street entrances, which are proposed to be salvaged and reused within the lobby, will result in a minimum of loss of original fabric from the designated space, and will maintain the east-west orientation of this portion of the lobby floor plan and the historic grid pattern of the lobby corridors while allowing for required lobby expansion. That the new terrazzo flooring will match the original flooring in terms of material, configuration, dimensions, colors, and details, and will be in keeping with the distinctive continuous character of the original floor at the building's ground floor, which was designed originally to flow without interruption throughout the interior and exterior spaces of the lobby and adjacent plaza and sidewalks. That the relocation southward of the revolving doors at the western West 50th Street entry will mirror the historic location of the revolving doors and eastern West 50th Street entry, both of which are situated under historic matched metal canopies. That the current requirements for safety in the lobby consisting of installation of a sprinkler system will necessitate the removal of historic tempered glass tile ceiling. That the replacement of laminated glass ceiling tiles will match the glass material, dark maroon color, textured surface, and reflectivity of the original ceiling. That the original historic maroon ceiling rosettes will be reused in the proposed new ceiling tile installation. That the number of proposed sprinkler heads is limited to the minimum required, and their flush-mounted installation of maroon finish paint will help keep them minimally visually intrusive at the ceiling and in the corridors. That the recessed installations of proposed new lighting fixtures at the designated lobby corridor ceilings and related dimensions of their proposed new surface-mounted collars, as well as the material design dimensions and flush-mounted installations of the proposed new ceiling fixtures at the designated arcade breezeway ceiling, will more closely resemble those features of the original lighting fixtures, which were replaced prior to designation with less sympathetic components. That the proposed installation of indirect lighting at the historic ceiling coves at the edges of the stainless steel-clad walls will be hidden from view and will enhance the historic floating character of the adjacent glass tile ceiling. That the proposed installation of recessed lighting at the historic ceiling coves at the edges of the marble-clad walls, while not indirect, will be discreet and minimally visible due to their locations at the outer perimeter of the lobby space. That the proposed removal of nonhistoric security equipment from the designated lobby floors, including railings, turnstiles, and desks, which now bisect the corridors and interrupt the significant dynamic pattern of the original serpentine patterned terrazzo flooring, as well as the proposed limitation of the new turnstile installations to locations at the elevator hall entries, will help restore the historic uninterrupted character of the corridors and return to view the continuous character of the historic flooring pattern across the corridor floors. That the simple rectilinear designs of the proposed new paired reception desk and security turnstiles will be in keeping with the rectilinear design features of the designated international style lobby. That the monolithic horizontal character of the proposed reception desks will recall the solid, broad character of original lobby planters now removed, as documented in historic photographs. That the marble and stainless steel materials of the proposed desk and stainless steel material of the proposed turnstiles will match those of the original components within the designated space. That the proposed reopening of the historic east-west corridor between the designated breezeway arcade and Americas Plaza will eliminate nonoriginal partitions and framing from the arcade and restore the historic portal in its eastern wall, as well as the original pinwheel-shaped circulation pattern of the building's lobby. And that this work will maintain and enhance the distinctive, significant historic combination of international and Brazilian modern style design features, the historic mix of rich and contrasting materials, and the historic rectilinear grid, circulation grid of the corridors at the designation lobby.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's applications and approved.